Good evening, everyone. We have someone here from the Ministerial Alliance? Yes, thank you.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening in a warm building to discuss things that are near and dear to the hearts of everyone. Lord, I just ask you, can see how full this room is, you know that there are multiple opinions in the building. But, Lord, help us to stay focused on the fact that tonight each opinion represented in this room believes that they know what is best for the people of the city of Rolla. Let us be united and respectful of that. Let us understand that this country was founded on different opinions and the right to have them. But, Lord, ultimately, let your will be done tonight. Let there be clarity. Let us understand exactly what's being asked and exactly what can and cannot actually be accomplished or enforced. Let us have ears that are willing to hear, that are not closed off simply because of our preconceived opinions, but let us have open minds and open hearts. Let us hear what we need to understand and leave this building tonight with a clear understanding of what needs to happen going forward. We pray this in your son's precious and holy name. Amen.
Counselperson Penner, would you lead us in a fudge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone 21 Stephendale Court. Tom?
All right, yes. Stephendale, 21 Stephendale Court, it's located at the corner of Stephendale Court and Highway 72. It's, drive by there now, it kind of looks like it's a single-family house and the applicant purchased the property as a single-family house. The applicant would like to have the property rezoned from the R1 district, I'll turn on the zoning map, to the C1. R1 is suburban residential to the C1 neighborhood commercial zoning district. Although, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission got into the details of what the applicant is specifically proposing, that he is proposing he'd like to turn this building into kind of a carryout or takeout type restaurant. You've got to remember that the C1 district, any use, any commercial use that's allowed in the C1 district can go on there and in particular, the, how the property is laid out and developed, it had to follow the code no matter what, if it were to be rezoned commercial. There was a lot of discussion about the parking and things like that, and no matter what happens, goes in there, whoever does something with the property will have to meet the code and meet the parking and all that stuff. So, of particular note, you notice on here, highway 72, the property has frontage on Highway 72, which is a major arterial road, and also note that all the properties kind of in that area along Highway 72 are already zoned C1, just a neighborhood commercial. There are a few of them that are being used for commercial uses and some of them that are still residential. This is a street view of the property, it's to be looking kind of towards the west on Highway 72. The house in question is a little bit further in the background, but I purposely zoomed out a bit to show you in the foreground, there is the one right at the other corner of Stephendale and Highway 72 is, was a house that was owned commercial and is being used for a commercial use. Just to summarize, the comprehensive plan actually does designate this property along, and the properties along Highway 72 as being appropriate for neighborhood commercial-type uses. Again, it's adjacent to commercial zoning and uses in the area and has the frontage on Highway 72. Planning and Zoning Commission did take a look at this, they recommended approval, but with a vote of three to one, there was a lot of discussion from, there's concerns about, because this property has access to Stephendale Court, which is a local residential street, so there's concern about that traffic entering into the neighborhood to access this property. And some concerns about the specific proposal of, like I said, what the applicant would like to do is to develop, convert this into a restaurant-type use, and questions about the feasibility of if that's possible and is that, would that cause impact, that specific use cause impacts to the neighborhood? Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom?
Hey, Tom, looking at, looking at the way it lays out, does it have access off of 72 or is it just off Southdale?
Just off the Stephendale.
Stephendale, I'm sorry.
They would not, they would likely not be able to get access to Highway 72 there.
That was going to be my next question. So, it looks like it would be a problem to get access.
Right.
So, Tom, did you have a lot of individuals come that were in for, or that were in favor or not in favor?
No, just, just one person from the neighborhood was there.
Okay. And were they in favor of?
No, they, they're the ones who raised the concerns about this traffic entering into the neighborhood and what if there isn't enough parking and so they're parking on the street and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll come back to Tom later. I'd like to officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of this proposed rezoning that would like to speak for?
Nope.
Got a lesson, got a lesson.
He smiled.
I live at 21 Stephendale Court and I'm requesting for rezoning of the property. So, the plan is to turn it into a carryout restaurant, and even though Rolla has a lot of restaurants in town, but we're planning to have a small carryout of Vietnamese food, so increase the diversity for dining options and people who wanted to, you know, taste some foreign cuisine and with rising prices, it's also a concern and we are a small, family-based business, so we hope to provide the community with affordable dining options. So, any questions? I can answer. The neighbor next to mine has raised concern about the traffic and parking, so the property has enough space to build parking space that could accommodate five to seven vehicles. So, the property opposite mine is already C1, it's an insurance office, GPD, and they currently have four parking spots. It's also on the front side of the, the, the street, and this street is a dead-end street. So, the people who go to that insurance office do not enter the dead-end street. Because it's a dead-end street, they, they go in, they will have a problem coming out. So, my property is the same. So, if customer coming and pick up food, there's parking space for them and they would exit from the parking lot, and there would be no reason, I would think, someone would enter a dead-end street. So, so that's would address the concern about a parking and the increased traffic, and already it's a very small neighborhood, 10, 12, 13 houses in the neighborhood, traffic is really, really light all throughout the date. I was working on cleaning and improving it, so I can see one or two vehicle an hour, it's very light based on my observations. And looking at other places, for example, on my way over here for the meeting today, Hero is a di, a carryout place, it's probably, it's the scale I'm planning to have, it's pretty small, and it's across from Thomas Jefferson Hall, S&amp;T Dormitory, and on 63, they have five parking slots for customers. So, based on that scale, I'm pretty confident I can provide five to seven parking slots. That customer can come in, park, get their food, and get out. So, that's the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that owns, is there a question for her?
No.
Mr. Tron? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that owns property within 185 feet of the proposed zoning that would like to speak for it? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak for Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak for the proposed rezoning? Yes?
Just here in support.
Thank you.
What does?
Just supportive of it. Supportive of the rezoning, right? Is there anyone that, yes?
I'll just say the same.
Do they know that? Two. Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? If not, the public hearing is closed.
I don't think.
No, he heard you.
Inside, inside.
You never said inside 185 feet.
And he was listening.
He was waiting for that.
He's paying close attention.
Okay, sorry. All right, we did 180, within 185 for, we did 180, within 185 against?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we never did.
That's what we missed.
All right, sorry about that.
Hi, I live within 185 feet against, just making that clear. So, I don't believe that this property is, should be recommended to be zoned C1 for several reasons. I don't believe it's appropriate for this property, even though properties around it are zoned C1. As it stands, the property doesn't have sufficient parking for any commercial endeavor, let alone a restaurant. I think it's got one spot at the moment, and I, I do feel like this would lead to street parking in a neighborhood that regularly relies upon this street parking. But the bigger entrance, the, the bigger issue rather, is that there's no entrance off of 72 and there's not really a feasible way to do that. It has frontage on 72, which is why all of those are zoned C1, because that makes sense. But in order to access this property, you have to enter the subdivision, you have to turn past the no outlet sign and then turn in to the, to the property. And I think that that will cause traffic in the subdivision, in a subdivision that doesn't have traffic, and kids like to play in the street and, and, you know, including my kids, and so that would change something that people fundamentally love about the subdivision, is that it's, there's no traffic. So, yeah, so the properties around it are zoned C1, but they are fundamentally different because they're either on 72 and have access and entrance to 72, or in the example of 1 Stephendale Court, the insurance building, they've added on a bunch of parking, and you're not really entering the subdivision at all. It's just right off of 72, so there's, there's not much of an issue there. This, you are entering the subdivision properly and it, I do think that that would cause an issue, and that's why even though there's C1 around it, I don't believe that this one specifically would be appropriate to rezone C1, so.
Question?
Will Benhart?
Benny?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Questions?
Thank you. Yeah, I do, I do have one question. So, many, you live within 185 feet?
Yes.
Can you give me, give me an idea of kind of, is this a younger neighborhood? Is this a, you know, are there a lot of kids?
Yeah, there's, there's a bit, there's, there's a handful of, of young families with children, and then there's some longer-term rentals, is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a blend, yeah.
Are you down the cul-de-sac on Stephendale?
Yes, I'm, I'm immediately next door.
Your interest is that you're next door?
Yeah, yeah.
As opposed to?
I, I would be the street parking, so.
Right.
This is my main concern, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against?
Inam Tu Tron, I would like to address the concern of the neighbor here again. First of all, if the picture is not on there, but GPD, the insurance office, the, the customer have to enter Stephendale Court. GPD, the insurance office, doesn't have 72 access. The, the customer have to enter Stephendale Court and go into the parking lot. So, I am just adjacent from there, that's the first point here. The second point is currently, yes, there is one parking space on the driveway of the property, and I just acquired early, early December, but I have plans and I already know if I have customer coming in, I will need parking space for the customer, there would be an exit for the customer to come in. So, the idea is the customer would come in, park the car, get the food, and exit. So, there would be no need for a customer to go straight past my neighbor's property. And again, we are not a dining place, so customer would usually come in for a couple of minutes, get the food, and exit. There is enough space, 54 feet from the side of the home to Stephendale Street, and 54 feet from the corner of 72 to my current driveway. So, there is enough space. If need be, I can ask for a contractor to come and have a plan for the parking space. So, I hope that would address the concern of the neighbor. And also, there is a sturdy wooden fence between my neighbors and my property, running all along from 72 all the way throughout the property, from 72, from Stephendale Court to the end of the property. There's a wooden fence, it was already built.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tron.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to counsel? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Tom, can you come up? I got a few follow-up questions. So, what is, let's assume at face value, Mr. Tron does exactly what he says he's going to do, what is the required parking?
It depends on what he does. The parking would be based on the customer area in the restaurant, so if he was a true takeout, say didn't have any customer.
Assume, he's going to take that as word. He's going to keep that building there, he's going to convert it to a takeout.
Yeah.
Okay. What are the parking requirements?
Well, it's, be one for every 75 square feet of the dining room area.
One for every 75 feet of what?
The dining room area, customer, the customer area.
But if it's takeout, hold on, hold on. So, if it's takeout?
Yeah.
How's that calculation done?
Well, I guess that'd be the, whatever room is inside there where the customers come in and receive their orders and all that.
Okay, so it's just a little window or something like that?
Could be, yeah.
Okay. Second question. Let's assume he changes it to, at a later date, to a dine-in location. Does the parking requirements change at that point?
Again, it's, it's based on the amount of area you provide, so if, if we.
I'm saying, if it changes. He starts out today, takeout, he's got one little window, he only needs one parking spot, hypothetically.
Yeah.
Three months from now, he decides to put in a little dine-in.
Yeah.
Does the parking, does the codes require him to now change the parking?
So, if we're talking about the same room, let's say it's a 75-square-foot room that he, that you would come in and either get your order or whatever.
Time out.
All right.
This is a house, right?
Yeah.
And let's just assume he's just going to operate it like a kitchen, a takeout. You walk in the front door, you get your food, and you leave. That's so many square feet, maybe it's just a foyer.
All right.
Three months from now, he says, you know, I like this, I want to dine in, and now I want to take the living room, bedroom, or whatever, we could dine in.
Yeah.
Do we, the city, come back at that point and say, the parking's changed?
Yeah, something like that, it's a change of use in that part of the room, of the, the thing that would require plans and building permit and then.
Okay, so there's a mechanism in there to say the parking changed?
Yeah.
If the business changes?
Yes.
Okay, now, this is a C1, so let's assume he's successful, but let's assume he's not. Counsel's decision on a rezoning has to look at virtually everything that's in a C1. So, what else could be in a C1?
Well, really, it's, it's any commercial use up inside of a building, and then it excludes, there's some, there's some limitations on the hours, so you can't stay open all night, and you can't serve alcohol, and you can't have outdoor commercial-type uses. That's one of the things we did with the, the code is, it's, C1 is limited up to a size, which is much bigger than what this property is, could, and could fit on there. And so, inside that building, any commercial use that you could think of that doesn't operate all night long and doesn't serve alcohol.
So, it doesn't have to be food? Could be some sort of retail or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tom?
I think they were all answered.
To, to the mayor's point, though, if, if he tears down the building and builds a brand-new building, whatever he uses as retail or whatever he uses as dining, you've still got to have that many parking spots?
Yeah.
Per square foot?
Yeah.
And, and Tom, right now, ballpark, I don't know if you've looked at this or not, how many parking spots can fit on that lot?
I, I think easily, without much work, you could fit four. With doing a little bit more work, I think you could get toward like six. To get more than that, I, I think it'd be pretty tough.
But he, he has to keep his square foot, say six is the cap, he has to keep his square foot within the square foot parameters of six parking spots?
Right, if he, if he fits six, then we can multiply out that, if he did want to put in dine-in seating, then we multiply that out and say, well, here's, here's how much space you can provide.
So, 450 square foot for six?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Any other questions for Tom?
Well, I'll just speak to it, because I, on the, when it came to planning zoning, I was the, the no vote. I love the idea, I love the maximizing the use of it. I was honestly torn on, on the situation. You know, it, it fronts 72, but where you pull in, the impact is not on Highway 72's road, you're pulling off of Highway 72. It being a dead-end court was concerning to me because if you pull in and there's, say, four parking spots and the four are taken, you go down, you pull into someone's driveway, you back out and pull back around. That sort of impact was a part of my concern. I was thinking about like the, the Hero Restaurant that the applicant referred to, you know, it's right off of 63, they actually pull off of Highway 63 right into there, there's no other side road impact. So, I was honestly torn on it, but that, that was, that was my reasoning for no, was, and unfortunately also at this point, if we could lock in that it had to be four or five parking spots, then that would make me more at ease. But this early in the game, at three zoning, we, we can't put any regulation on that at this point. So, later on, and I trust you, I'm sure he's a great guy, but if he later on wants one parking spot there, there's nothing we can do later on to make him do otherwise if it matches the square footage. So, even though that's his plan, if he changes his mind, there's nothing that can be done later on about it, so that was my concerns about it.
Tom, what's the zoning of the property directly across the street?
C1.
Which, which direction? Well, I guess either way, it's C1, any direction.
Hey, Tom, can you go back to the picture where it shows GDP, so you can kind of see the drive? So, where is the access? Is that past the bushes down there?
Oh, oh, yeah, the current driveway for this house is, is down here, yeah.
So, is he, is he going to be allowed to widen that to, for more access, for more parking?
Yeah, that should be fine, yeah. In fact, we've talked about the possibility of having like a circle drive and have another driveway kind of as, you know, closer over here and stuff like that, yeah.
What's the com, current comprehensive plan say about all the frontage on that road?
It recommended a neighborhood commercial-type uses.
On Stephendale?
All, all along the frontage, including this property, yeah.
Tom, what would prevent the applicant or the landowner from putting an entrance in on, into the property from 72 directly?
It requires a permit from MoDOT.
Okay.
And with it being so close to Stephendale, the road there is too close, and then also there's another road across the way there that would be kind of conflicting with and all that.
So, Tom, with the future planning, you said that all along 72, it's, it's wanting, we're wanting to move towards commercial, correct? Just wondering if this is a unique situation, because commercials off of 72, in my mind, I'm thinking general access, like we just talked about with Hero Bento's with 63. This is technically on 72, but it's, there's kind of a workaround. So, any thoughts about that?
Well.
About that conflicting with plan where we're going?
So, I think that's probably the reason why this wasn't zoned commercial in the past, is that it's a little different. The one on the other side there, it has frontage on Rolla Street as well as Highway 72, and so the thought might have been, well, maybe it'll, that house will go away and be redeveloped and have a driveway off of Rolla Street, something like that. And then the other ones have frontage on Highway 72, so that might, that might be the reason why this lot was, was never, was not zoned commercial in the past, is that thinking that it's more in the neighborhood, so, you know, it's a thought.
So, Tom, back to, and I think this is where Nathan was going this, with this a minute ago, if, and, and the mayor as well, so if all he does is a foyer up front, 75 square foot, whatever, all we can actually require him to have is one parking spot as it is today?
Yeah, that'd be right.
And there's nothing else we can do there to adjust that, because to the neighbor's point, he's still going to do the same amount of business, he probably needs four, five, or six parking spots, even if it's going to go in and out, but our ordinance doesn't require that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But I would add that they haven't submitted a plan yet for how the buildings are utilized, so ultimately that becomes a matter of what is actually laid out before us when they come into the permits.
Nathan, help me on this. Is, is that the order that it normally goes? Do they not come with a plan very often?
We're supposed to consider use only, and so it's not about the plan, it's not, because we could rezone it and that business never gets, that never occurs, and he sells it and it can go any other C1 business there, so the actual use of it isn't supposed to be considered at all.
So, would we be better off, because of this being odd and different, to actually ask for a plan before we make a decision? Can we do that? Can we not do that?
You can, you can do that, you can ask for what they're proposing, but it's not binding.
Yeah.
So, I know a couple families down Stephendale Court, and there are, you know, young families and elderly as well, and I just kept thinking, you know, what happens, because a restaurant, you know, can get busy, even if it is carryout, and just the parking along it and pulling into other people's driveways and parking and whatnot too, so that, that's a big concern.
Any other questions for Tom? If not, can we have the first reading, or, yeah, can we have the first reading, please?
Excuse me. An ordinance to approve the rezoning of property located at 21 Stephendale Court from the R1 suburban residential district to the C1 neighborhood commercial district.
We do not have any acknowledgements or special presentations tonight, so moving to old business, we have two items. First is an ordinance to enter, to enter into an agreement with the Lockmiller Group.
So, at the last meeting, council awarded the, the design of the right-of-way contract to Lockmiller for the 18th Street, Bard'sville, St. James Road intersection. You know, the plan here would be to take the plans far enough to determine what the right-of-way needs would be. We do not have anything in the budget to purchase right-of-way or construction, we will continue to monitor this intersection and, you know, the traffic study indicated sometime in the next 20 years that intersection would fail and need, needs some upgrades, so this would allow us to start looking at what the right-of-way needs are, because we've had some developers come in talking about this area, and it should be nice to know what the right-of-way needs are. So, again, we scored consultants and selected the Lockmiller Group. Staff is requesting the final reading of the contract with Lockmiller for $11,400.
Any questions for Darren? If not, can we have the final reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Rolla, Missouri to execute on behalf of the city of Rolla, Missouri, a certain amendment, number one, between the city of Rolla, Missouri and the Lockmiller Group for professional services for intersection improvements at 18th and Old St. James slash Bard'sville, project number 528.
Jackson, make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, a roll call vote, please.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Fridley?
Yes.
Steen?
No.
Roman?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hunter?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Grevan?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Next item is a discussion regarding the future of city water fluoridation. John?
Yeah, I'll just introduce the topic, and then, of course, this is here really for city council to consider. But in October 2024, the issue of fluoridation surfaced, and actually, I think surfaced as a result of a court case out of California. But a little background history, Rolla's been fluoridating its water supply since 1968. That was done after a referendum with 59% support. In 2015, city council lowered that threshold from 1.2 parts per million to 0.7 parts per million. That was a recommendation, that was not a mandate, but a recommendation that was sort of issued through the EPA, kind of worked its way through across the country in a large degree. So council does not need to take any action to maintain fluoridation, that's adopted by ordinance in Chapter 35. If council is interested in modifying that or removing the fluoridation, then it would be initiated by a motion that would start that process, and state law says you'll wait 90 days before final action is taken, and then ordinance would be prepared to amend Chapter 35 to either reduce or to lower or to increase if that was so desired. But at this point, I think council has heard pros and cons from experts on both sides of the issue, and it's really a matter for city council to consider at this point.
John, I just want to make sure I understand the process from here. Tonight is really to decide whether or not we're going to give the 90-day notice?
Yeah.
And then, once the 90 days expires, then we would come back with a first-reading ordinance and a second-reading ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So the whole process will take four months?
Yeah.
So tonight, you have to decide, you want to go down that path or you don't want to go down that path?
So I know we have had lots of discussion on it, and we've heard from experts on both sides. We've heard some really great information. One of the reasons why I had brought this topic up is because the community has really wanted to have the discussion and hear the pros and cons. And I do know, and I know I've stated this before, but out of Phelps County and the surrounding five counties, there are only six water systems out of 59 that have fluoride, so they are moving away from it. So I would actually like to see, I would like to see that process started. And so I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the removal process.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and second. Any further discussion?
So I would like to have a conversation about this just from a different perspective. The persons this impacts are not going to speak at this meeting tonight. They will not, because they're little, and most of them have no choice about what they consume. As someone who worked with other people's children for 22 years, I've seen the effects of poor dental hygiene. I've seen children with black teeth on the top and on the bottom. Not every parent does the right thing with their child's teeth. Fluoride was, as a young man in the 70s, I sat in my classroom in a rural area in Missouri, and we gargled fluoride, and we spit it out. I would like to attribute that, and probably as a Marine, we had Navy doctors that worked on our teeth, to allow me to keep my teeth. I'm really concerned that we're putting the most vulnerable persons who don't have a choice in jeopardy by removing fluoride to some degree. I worry about them, because I've seen the pain the children go through, the challenges. It's, there are serious medical problems when a child's teeth are that rotten. And if we can prevent that to some degree, and you can remove fluoride from your water with a filter in your house. So I have serious concerns about removing this, because the persons that need it the most are not going to speak today, they won't be here.
I'd like to second Mr. Fridley's point, just that the greatest impact of this decision is going to fall on children. And we've heard from many dental groups who've emphatically said that, you know, it's from six months to six years when the fluoride does the most good. I've heard it, you know, so, and that it builds up the enamel for a lifetime of good health. And, you know, there are countless diseases that can be attributed and start with oral health. And so if you have bad oral health, you have, you can have, you can have mental disorders, you can have cardiac disorders, you can have pulmonary disorders, you can have kidney, liver, intestinal disorders, and they all start with oral health. And the easiest way to ensure at least a level playing field of good oral health is to maintain the fluoride in the water. Now, I just, go with me for a second on this. I've also heard it said that it's the dose that matters.
That bag searched before we got in here?
No.
Did you bring enough for everybody?
Yep, and then some.
Laurie, that's where your water went.
That is how much water you would have to consume to reach a poisonous level of fluoride in your body, if you only weighed one kilogram. So I would have to drink 80 times that amount of water in a 24-hour period in order to get to the level where it actually does toxic harm to my body. Speaking with an epidemiologist, we have one at Berar Science, thankfully, she has a PhD in epidemiology, she is not remotely concerned with fluoride in the water systems here, because it is not high enough to do any harm to anybody. It is not high enough to do the mental harm that Dr. Kessinger commonly points to. It is not high enough to do any kind of harm to anyone. It only does good. And I can't imagine that anybody is going to drink enough water in a day to reach the level of toxicity, or to reach the level where it can begin to do harm. And the nice thing about fluoride is that after about 40 minutes in your system, it starts to metabolize out. So it reaches its maximum point at 40 minutes. So I can't, for the life of me, understand why we would want to inflict harm, knowingly inflict harm, if that is the amount of water you have to drink in order to get harm on the other side. It just, it boggles my mind. And just so we're clear, that's 14 bottles, that's seven liters. And that's if it was actually at the dosage that's in the city ordinance. Per the most recent report, it's only 0.26. So you'd have to actually drink three times that amount in order to get to the lethal, to get to the toxic dose.
Rolla's level's at 0.26.
2.6.
No, it's not 0.7.
No, by ordinance, it's 0.7. By measurement, per RMU's reports, they're publicly available reports, it is 0.26.
Rodney, somebody from RMU told us it varied between 0.6 or 0.7, and sometimes it'd go up to 0.8, but it was usually around 0.7. So that was a great show. You thought about that, that was good. All right, well, point, counterpoint. Well, first off, I would like to say that I have a high amount of respect for our dentist, and I held the dentist in high regard that came out here and spoke. And so it's a tough issue for me, and it's a tough issue for two reasons. One is that I think I've made it evident how I feel about it as far as the research I've done on it, but also, I understand that people have other opposing opinions. So I want to remind some people here, he's talking about poisonous doses, he's talking about falling over and dying, so this is not what we're talking about. And for Councilman Fridley, you had children in school, how many of those children had fluoridated water, and they still had that problem? So-
I don't know, I didn't do a study on that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, and you were in a school that was in town. So, so I don't, you know, and I see these, you know, and I don't disagree with what my ward four buddy has talked about here as far as oral health being essential, it is. Aristotle was the one that said that all disease begins in the mouth. Now, we don't know if he was talking about what you eat or the disease that can happen in your mouth, but I do want to remind some folks of some things. There's never been safety studies done at the level of RCT or a meta-analysis on fluoride, so we don't know. We've assumed that this is safe for years and years, because we've just done it this way, and that's what's happened. So Cochrane Report came out, it is a huge report that takes all the data, and they looked at and they weighted the research from 50 years ago, which is what much of what many proponents of fluoride will cite, those 50-year-old research studies saying that fluoride's okay. So what they did is they weighted those studies with newer studies, and they came out and they had the conclusion, and I'm going to, I don't want to read too far in this, because you guys, we've heard a lot of information about this, but I do want to make this remark about it. This is a quote from the Cochrane Report. "When interpreting the evidence, it is important to think about the wider context and how society and health have changed over time." The co-author, Professor of Health Sciences Research University of Manchester, "Most of the studies on water fluoridation are over 50 years old before the availability of fluoride toothpaste. Contemporary studies give us a more relevant picture of what the benefits are." Following on in the Cochrane Report, it says, and I want this to be emphasized, "Minimal reduction in dental carries has been seen with water fluoridation." And they even said in the report that it could have been so negligible that it was a statistical error. So I know we're all up in arms about children, and we should be, having poor dental health, but we've got to have a better way to do this, because fluoride is a neurotoxin. It passes the placental barrier, goes into the developing brain, and we know from research that's given us, higher-level research than what's been done about the safety, we know in those research studies, that they're showing us that there's drops in IQ. Now, I want to go back to what the judge said in California, and the judge told us at 0.7, what we are at Rolla right now, 0.7 is an unreasonable risk, and the word he used was to a subpopulation. Now, why that's important is this. That means that most people are going to drink this, 14 bottles of water, and be just fine, but there's a subpopulation that we do not know how to identify, that's going to be adversely affected, because fluoride goes to the brain, and there's no use for fluoride, there's not one good use for fluoride in the brain. It does nothing good for the brain. Also, it takes a very short Google search to know that the fluoride that is ingested in that baby that's developing in mommy's belly, it does no good for the developing teeth. It's well-reported, so there's no benefit to the teeth of the baby and the pregnant mother. But yet, it gets into the brain, and they're saying now at 1.5, 1.5, six-point IQ drop. Now, that doesn't mean that every single mother that drinks water, fluoridated water at that level, their children are going to have six points difference in their IQ. But what that means is this, that's an average. So what that means is, if you have this subpopulation, they can be adversely affected more so. We talk about lower socioeconomic children having the most problems with this, this is what the dentist told us, and I feel for that, I totally get it. But I want to tell you that anybody losing three to six, or however many points of IQ, how much is acceptable? How much is acceptable? So I'll yield time. There's more I'd love to say about this. I do have a high amount of respect for the dentist, I have a high amount of respect for the people who presented, I totally get this. This is not a slam dunk, one thing or the other, but I just want it to be known that it is a neurotoxin, I do believe that it's causing problems.
Thank you, Rob.
Just to go off of Rob's, and, you know, it's overwhelming when there's people that are experts in this to try to consume so much information and data. But a part of what my consideration was, was the subpopulation, Rob, that you had referred to, individuals that this has a higher impact on, whether it's the extremely young or the extremely sick that can't process this, whether that's because of kidney dysfunction or other things like that, that they can't process fluoride well. And so I was torn in it, but when I began to think through that, I think where I was considering was the doing harm versus doing positive good. And Han, Councilman Han, had mentioned, you know, to do harm, and in my mind, I understand, but there could be harm being done by having it as well. What we're attempting to do is doing positive good. It's well-intentioned to have it to do positive good, but if we're accidentally causing harm to another population, within the realm of Hippocratic oath, you deal with do no harm, and then you do positive good. And so I don't want to ignore, even though I'm still very torn in the realm of it, because, you know, it seems like fluoride has helped in the realm of tooth decay over the decades. My larger question has to do with application, it seems like topically, that that seems to be the better way to go. And are we causing harm to a population of extremely sick, six months and under pregnant mothers, or extremely sick individuals who can't process things as well? Like Dr. Kessinger said, the average one of us could drink it, and we're not going to feel the average difference, but for other individuals, it could be causing harm. So that was more of the realm that my mind was going in as far as the contemplation of whether removing was proper. Wasn't necessarily for myself, who wasn't so much concerned for my own well-being, but is there a population that we're actually causing harm to? And I would say that removing it is not that easy. Like, I've looked into, like, I think the average bread of filters and things like that don't remove fluoride from it. You're looking at reverse osmosis system, these things are thousands of dollars. Opting out of what could be viewed as a forced treatment, like you're being forced to opt in to have it in your water, to opt out actually will cause you thousands of dollars, versus if you want to consume it, something like toothpaste being very inexpensive. So this was a part of what I was consuming as a non-professional in the industry, but trying to consume as much of the information, that's some of what I've been processing over these past few weeks.
Okay, so we've had a lot of great information from, mostly from people that aren't from Rolla. So I wanted to back this up a little bit, and made a lot of phone calls, or accepted a lot of phone calls, or read a lot of texts from our dentists locally here. And every answer I got from every dentist, Dr. Kears was one of them, I see him standing in the back of the room, he said, getting rid of fluoride, and every one of them, not just him, every one of them told me, the only thing that's good for is the dentist, because it's going to slow down their business. It is terrible for the kids, it's terrible for the patients. They, everyone of them, to a T, said, Kevin, fluoride has to be in our water. I talked to Four Seasons, or I'm sorry, Four Rivers, which takes care of a lot of our kids, especially the low-income type kids. And last year, '24, they did 565 oral surgeries on kids. 565, all right? I said, okay, give me a breakdown, let, you know, let me learn from this. And he told me that very, he said a very small percentage of those were from Rolla. Most of all of those were from surrounding communities that don't have fluoride in the water. And he said, that's a lot of the reason, he believes, they were doing those oral surgeries, because they didn't have the fluoride in the water, and they weren't getting those treatments young and growing up through that. So that was a telltale for me, 565. He said, I can't give you exact numbers, but, he said, I can tell you- He said, I can't give you exact numbers, but it, he said, I could tell you that was a defining factor in why he was having to take care of that many kids. Again, I didn't talk to every dentist in town, but I talked to a lot of them. And every one of them are for, are for exactly what we have going on today.
I can't speak, I can only speak to my experience with fluoride. And this is what I will say. About five years ago, I started reverse osmosing and I also got rid of fluoridated toothpaste and I stopped getting cavities. And ever since then, when I go to the dentist, you don't have any cavities, your teeth look great. So I may be part of that subpopulation that Rob talks about. And personally, I think I should at least get the choice to not have it in my water. And I know others as well that have had the same experience.
I'll offer my comment. We've heard from various people and organizations, both on the pros and cons of fluoridated water. From my perspective, the benefits of fluoridated water for dental health is well-known, well-studied, and certainly time-tested across both the United States and the world. Studies looking at medical implications of fluoridated water have been done, but not nearly to the same degree as those dental studies. Those studies were also based on higher fluoride levels than what is in our water, namely twice as much. We all know that too much of a good thing is bad for you. A few other points that have come my way in the last couple of weeks. The lawsuit against the EPA in California is being appealed, and it's being appealed by the EPA in the last week or two. For some reason, they do not agree with the judge, probably on the technical merits of that decision. According to people that I've spoken to, there are no studies of fluoride levels in the United States on IQ that have been conducted in areas with naturally low and high levels of fluoride in the water. All major health and scientific organizations are calling for a robust U.S. study. Stopping fluoridated water has had dire consequences on oral health. Buffalo, New York, and Calgary, Canada are examples of this. The significant increases in cavities along with major increases of children having to be taken into operating rooms for dental treatment under general anesthesia led these cities to restart their fluoridation programs. To the point about babies. If we look to the medical experts who evaluate research and recommend to mothers what is best for them and their babies, both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American College of OBGYNs recommend that pregnant mothers and their babies and toddlers drink fluoridated water for the health of their teeth, as well as making the children's permanent teeth harder in order to alleviate cavities in the future as they, those teeth develop under the gum line. State Health Department officials in Missouri have provided test results for ACT scores of graduating seniors, both in areas of Missouri that have naturally low and high levels of fluoride in their water. The results were basically identical, meaning that the naturally lower levels starting at zero parts per million and naturally high levels, over two parts per million, the ACT scores were very similar. Just to remind everyone that Rolla's water is .7. Low ACT scores better correlate with poverty rates than fluoride levels. Fluoridated water most benefits lower-income people. Hong Kong and Singapore are both fluoridated countries. They are consistently in the top three countries in the world with respect to what is perceived to be smart people. I ask that you consider the continuation of fluoridation while high-quality studies are conducted in the United States to show if there is any harm. Any further discussions or questions? If not, we have, yes, we have a motion and we have a second. We'll call vote.
Jackson?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Churbin?
Yes.
Fridley?
No.
Roman?
No.
Steen?
Yes.
Mayberry?
No, Mayberry.
Yes.
(laughing).
Turner?
Yes.
Han?
No.
Welch?
Yes.
Greven?
No.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Have you heard that voice before?
Six yeses.
Five nays.
Yes, so that would pass.
Yeah, so it passes. So you're telling the community to start the process to defluorinate the water?
Uh, there's a, this is not an ordinance.
To notify the department and outer resources.
Yeah, it's not an ordinance. It's creating.
Your motion was to start the process. Yes, one and the same.
So, okay, so I'm not, I just, just to, so I can clarify, because I'm all for that, it's fine, because I voted for it. But it, this is not an ordinance, because an ordinance takes seven to pass.
The state requires 90 days. So you, you told us with this ordinance and your vote to start the process to take the fluoride, fluoride out. That process is a 90-day requirement, public notification by the state, followed by an ordinance first reading, followed by an ordinance second reading.
Right. And so that ordinance will have to be voted on.
Yes. But, but this is not like other ordinances where you can cut and paste and, and go through a thousand gyrations. This is a pretty short ordinance. If you voted tonight to do this, you're basically voting to take it out.
So Mayor, when we get to that point.
But we are in between election. 90 days is going to take us past.
Well, then you shouldn't have done this tonight. I mean, frankly speaking, half of you were up for vote. This was not the kind of decision to take when half of you are up for election, but you did.
I mean, that could be at any time though, too, if you look at.
So Mayor, when we get to the first and second reading, will that require seven, seven yeses then? This one does not, but that one will.
Yeah. And why did this one not? That's, I was curious of that.
It's just a motion.
Because you just started the process.
It's just a motion as opposed to an ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. New business. Resolution to authorize a city administrator administrator to execute a award.
So the city of Rolla was chosen to participate in the 25 cooperative marketing program with Department of Economic Development for welcome and wayfinding signage. We could receive up to $30,000 for qualified expenses. It'd be a 50-50 match. The move Rolla Transportation Development District did set aside $100,000 for signage for the Pine Street project to still be completed. So we do have matching funds available. In your packet, we had mentioned that we were thinking of funding a welcome sign at the intersection of Bishop and Pine Street. We have since had a meeting with RDVA and Missouri S&amp;T and both entities agreed that it was probably not the best use of the funds. So we're proposing tonight, if council wants to accept this grant, would be issue a request for qualifications from some landscape architecture firms to look at doing some design work on signage on Pine Street for the entire corridor from Sixth to Bishop. And then hopefully advanced design on some sort of overhead signage. I've got some examples here. grant and $100,000 will not fund the construction of a sign, you know, of this magnitude, but our hope would be to, you know, advance the design far enough to have something ready if some other grants come along. Another option would be some kiosk in the downtown area. That'd be wayfinding and possibly some advertising. So is there any questions?
Darren, I might add.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, we've got the sign that's currently at Sixth Street heading into downtown, the walking downtown sign. That type of sign could also be up at 63, kind of as an entryway in. So I just want council to make sure they understand what we're looking at is a kind of a multitude or multiple types of signage that would sort of draw people downtown. At this point, we just haven't nailed that down and we really want to think of the big vision of how that can all be tied together. So that's really what the $30,000 grant would allow us to do.
Any questions for Darren? If not, can you read the resolution? A resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a certain notice of award between the city of Rolla and the state of Missouri Division of Tourism. Fridley will make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to claims and our fiscal transactions, we have two. Person is a motion to award the bid and an ordinance for asphalt work.
So staff owing bids on the project for a maltein-based asphalt rejuvenator on several city streets in, in town. In your packet is a, is a map showing what streets we're proposing to do this rejuvenator on. We received two bids. The low bid was Pugly Services out of Brighton, Illinois. Staff is recommending we not award to the low bidder. They, their bid included an alternate specification and did not meet specifications of the project. In this case, their product is not the same product that we, we were asking for in the bid. So we are recommending we award to corrective asphalt materials in the amount of $95,067.05. So staff will be asking for a motion for a bid award and first ring of the ordinance to enter into the contract.
Any questions for Darren?
Darren, just a quick question. I noticed that part of this will go down on 10th Street, down to, all the way to Forum. Do we do any kind of cost share with MoDOT for that at all?
That's our road, no.
Okay. I'll just make, when does it turn into MoDOT's road?
Center of the intersection of Forum and 10th.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Now, the, the low bidder had the wrong product. Is that what you said?
Correct.
Do they have capacity for the other product? Because, I mean, the, the price is significantly less. Would they have the capacity? I mean, did they misunderstand that they were given an ability to be like, oh, we actually have that product and here's the bid? Are we able to do that? Or are they able to do that?
No. So, you know, I, I had several follow-up conversations with them. Like I said, they, they submitted an alternate product and supplied specifications, you know, for that product and it, it just was not what we were looking for. But, you know, what I told them is, you know, be willing to do a pilot project with them. You know, that's, that's what we did with this, you know, maltein, you know, product last year, we did a very small pilot product or project and monitored the performance. So, you know, I'm talking with them about coming down to a pilot project.
Okay. And this maltein product has worked pretty well?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no further question? Is there a motion to award the bid?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC.
Next item is also a motion to award, followed by a first reading. Darren?
So we opened bids for Project 594, our sanitary sewer CIPP repairs. So that's where we install liner, you know, inside the existing pipes. So, you know, we don't have, we don't have to dig up the sewer to, you know, fix it in this case. It's much cheaper than digging them up. We got four bids. Low bid was Visu Sewer for $292,794. This would install linings at about 1.3 miles of city sewer mains. So staff is requesting a motion to award the bid to the low bidder and the first ring of the ordinance or enter into the contract. Is there any questions?
Have you ever worked with Visu Sewer before?
We have not. But I did check references. They, they seem to be a very reputable company.
Any further discussions? Not as there are motion to award a bid?
I'll make that motion. I'll second. You go ahead, Mike.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Visu Sewer of Missouri LLC.
Moving on to citizen communications. Are any citizen that would like to speak to the city council? Yes.
Mayor, can we clarify the expectations for timeline for this endeavor, please?
Yes, three minutes. And given the likely subject, I would say, I don't think we, you have to publicly say your address, but I am going to request that you say if you're a city resident or not.
Okay. My name is Lindsay Bagnall and I own property in the city and pay taxes in the city. I live out in the county, but we do have the city property as well.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure. I talked with Josh Roman last week and I really had a good conversation with him. I appreciate his passion for protecting women and children, but I think he's going about it the wrong way. He told me he'd like his church members to help unwed mothers by housing and providing needed assistance as they birth and raise their children. That's admirable. What a great idea. And it's a great positive way to help women. I'd like to see more of that from other people and other churches. However, enacting an ordinance that punishes women is negative, controlling, and not admirable. Here are some of the negative outcomes of passing this ordinance to make us a sanctuary city for the unborn. Arguments and possibly protests bringing more negative publicity to our city. Outside groups erecting billboards around town promoting abortion. It will not stop mailing Mifepristone to Rolla. It will just drive it further underground to avoid getting caught. Women will just go outside the city limits to have it mailed elsewhere. Rolla becomes a strategic chess piece, creating a culture of fear and mistrust, positing neighbor against neighbor, which is not how we create healthy communities. Josh told me he got more emails in support of the ordinance than against it, and I think that might be because people have not read the ordinance through carefully and think it is a ban on all abortion and they're in favor of that, which you can't do because of the state law now. But I also think some churches sometimes mobilize their parishioners to send emails in support, and so you get more of them because they're more mobilized. I have some questions. What court would hear a lawsuit if, if one was brought by, say, Joe Dalton against an out-of-state company mailing Mifepristone to Rolla? I don't think the municipal court is qualified and wants to do this. State court does not want to do it because it's a legal thing in Missouri now. And federal courts really, I don't think are interested. The Comstock Act has, that they talk about, has been dormant for many years and is considered obsolete law. At this point, unless the Supreme Court takes action, federal courts do not pursue cases of violation of this act. Then we have Mark Lee Dixon, our friend from Texas. He tells us he is a Southern Baptist minister and that he wears his backwards black baseball cap for religious reasons and refused to remove it when asked to do so by our mayor. I spoke with my cousin, who's a Southern Baptist minister, and when I asked him if this was a thing, he said absolutely not, no. So I don't know what the religious reason is for that. He doesn't really tell people who's funding his efforts, and I'm curious if that could possibly be the Heritage Foundation. Among many other insidious proposals, their Project 2025 has stated they will end the requirement that hospitals provide medically necessary abortions under the Emergency Medical Treatment and Active Labor Act. So those women will just die. The Kentucky Lantern article stated the Heritage Foundation is pushing Mitchell and Dixon's version of Comstock because it fits their agenda. Who pays Mitchell's fees to defend Dixon? Dixon's now-defunct church, the Sovereign Love Church, paid $109,000. Where'd they get that money? And I know nobody really cares about this anymore because they all got pardoned, but Mark Lee Dixon on January 6, 2021 infiltrated the police barricade and was among those present on the steps of the Capitol during the attack.
Lindsay, about 30 seconds.
Okay. Is this the man with whom we want our city to be associated? I honestly don't think so. I honestly don't think so. The FDA states that more than 100 studies over 30 years have found that 99% of Mifepristone uses worked with no complications at all, making it safer than Tylenol or Viagra. And yet, we don't want to enact an ordinance against those drugs. This ordinance will not stop abortions or reduce their number. It will just drive women underground and force them to rely on coattail abortions that either won't work, will damage the baby, or kill the woman. This is not pro-life. This is anti-woman. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I know you're running this meeting, but could we adhere to the three-minute time limit with this, please? I'd be more than happy to run the timer.
You do. I mean, that seriously.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Penny Cook here again. I want to read a letter to you that I received from the Missouri State Medical Association to share with you all today. Dear council members, on behalf of the more than 4,000 physician and medical student members of the Missouri State Medical Association, I write to urge opposition to the proposed ordinance relating to abortion that has been disseminated in advance of your public meeting this evening. MSMA adopted the following statement in response to the Dobbs decision. As physicians, our utmost responsibility is to the health and well-being of our patients. MSMA supports legislation that protects patient-physician autonomy and opposes the criminalization of medically necessary healthcare and policies that restrict Missourians' ability to access healthcare in Missouri and other states. We recognize the passage of Amendment 3 has invited litigation and debate. We believe the city council would be wise to excise restraint and let any pending litigation and legislation determine next steps. We urge you in the strongest possible terms not to put physicians at legal risk, either criminally or civilly, for providing medically necessary healthcare to Missouri patients. We have a shortage of OB-GYN physicians across the state. Passing this ordinance will further complicate the efforts to recruit and retain physicians who are needed to provide healthcare services for patients in the City of Rolla and around the state. Further, any effort such as this proposed ordinance that would create a private cause of action against physicians who provide healthcare is the wrong approach and should be rejected by the city council. Missouri's physicians' focus should remain on providing the highest quality of care to Missouri patients and not worrying about the threat of legal action by those who wish to interfere in the relationship between a patient and their physician. Please support physicians in Rolla by rejecting this misguided proposal. Sincerely, Jeff Hawley, MSMA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Ruby Husar, and I am a resident of the city. Access to abortion is not a matter of moral principle or belief. The consequences of its availability run beyond the scope of the birth of a hypothetical baby. It is a material concern that affects people's ability to get jobs, feed themselves, and remain in good health. We, the people of Missouri, recently acknowledged that fact and enshrined it into this state's constitution by passing Amendment 3 in November. And now, we are being attacked by outside organizations that wish to whittle away the rights we have created for ourselves. Even as I speak, the availability of abortion services to the people has not been restored as we voted that it should be. The concept of the sanctuary city of the unborn threatens to take away even the secondary solutions we have in place to cover for that absence. The availability of abortion pills serves only to increase the safety and financial stability of the people of Rolla, and it is my belief that attempting to take that away would be an attack against the people on the part of the legislature. There is no reason to attempt to bring a long irrelevant law from 1873 back into relevance. The purpose of this entire business is clear. It is to take away our access to medical care in the state of Texas, from which the financial backers behind this entire push hail has already largely succeeded in banning abortion. That ban has directly killed at least three people now: Portia Numesey-Navea Crane, Joselle Barnica. As far as I'm concerned, the state of Texas murdered them by denying the medical care that the doctors around them were desperate to provide. I will not allow this town to take a single step down that same road. Josh Roman's political efforts directly contradict the direct Democratic efforts that the people of Missouri have undertaken. They put us all in danger, not just of a horrific life-ending miscarriage, but of taking portions of our already unfair and overpriced medical system and saying, "No, we know better than you, worried doctor, and we're going to insist that we're right, even if it kills you." The city government has no right to overreach this, and making the effort only stands to challenge any future decisions we might make in an effort to govern ourselves rather than be governed by a small cabal of the wealthy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Reagan Gordon. I'm a resident of Rolla in Ward 2, and I'm a registered nurse. I worked, or I currently work in labor and delivery locally, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a private citizen. And I'm requesting the council to consider passing this ordinance to make Rolla a sanctuary city for the unborn. Chemical or medication-induced abortions have a complication rate four times that of surgical abortion, and as many as 1 in 5 women will suffer a complication. 15% of women may experience a hemorrhage, and 2% of women will experience an infection. There are some other side effects, including retained tissue, risk of incomplete abortions, and those are higher in medication-induced abortions than of surgical abortions. Women are more likely to go to the ER due to complications after chemical abortions, again, than of surgical abortions. In 2022, there were 65 reported abortion complications in Missouri, of which 36 patients were hospitalized for treatment. This is only 3% of the reported abortions in Missouri, but I do want to emphasize that this is reported numbers. With topics like these, the occurrence rate is usually much higher. Abortion is a very difficult topic, and many women seeking abortions may not seek care when faced with complications, especially if they are not treated by an in-person OB-GYN with a scheduled follow-up appointment. All drugs have complications or side effects, and it's true that the complication rate is low. However, these complications are managed by licensed medical providers, providing the highest standards of care to patients. Mail-in abortion-inducing drugs do not have these advantages. I have concern for pregnant women and girls ordering these drugs from a third-party company, not necessarily knowing the full ramifications or side effects, and not knowing what to do if these complications occur. If prescribed, these drugs should be managed by our excellent OB-GYNs with scheduled in-person follow-ups with a doctor after being administered. There are some other problems with prescribing and mailing these drugs via telehealth. The FDA only approves these drugs for up to 10 weeks of pregnancy, but in 2022, 41 Missouri women had chemical abortions after 10 weeks of pregnancy. These can pose significant risks, especially if induced by a drug without an in-person ultrasound to accurately confirm gestational age and rule out an ectopic pregnancy, which is a pregnancy that implants outside of the uterus and is a contraindication for a chemical abortion. The increased use of telemedical chemical abortions increases risk for women in the very ways the Comstock laws were meant to reduce. This ordinance does not ban abortion. It does not harm emergency miscarriage, contraception, or ectopic pregnancy care in Rolla. It does not harm medical providers and protects women from being sued from having an abortion. It also does not prevent these drugs from being prescribed in Rolla at all. What it does do, may I finish this last sentence? What it does do is provide safety to women in Rolla by prohibiting drugs with significant potential side effects to the residents of Rolla with no medical oversight. Thank you.
Thanks, Reagan.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Frank. I live in Phelps County. And that's Kathy with a C. So I'm not an attorney or anything. I just read through the agreement, the ordinance, and I just thought there were just some things that, if passed, would create a lot of liability for Rolla to defend this ordinance. And I just wanted to point out some things and just my thoughts on this. First of all, in the recitals in the ordinance, there's no mention of our newly-passed Amendment 3, as far as I can see, and I thought that was a very important thing to include in those recitals. To me, the structure of the ordinance makes it almost useless. The people promoting this ordinance would be subjecting Rolla to be used essentially as a guinea pig for their legal experiment that is already not working in Texas. A similar bounty hunter-type law in Texas, SB 8, drafted by the same people who drafted this ordinance, I assume, because it's very close, and passed by the Texas Legislature on September 1, 2021, has not been effective. It, too, relies on citizens to accuse other citizens of helping someone get an abortion. Apparently, that law has turned out to be so useless that just this past weekend, an article appeared in the Washington Post saying that Texas anti-abortion activists are actively recruiting men to squeal on women who have had abortions because the activists are having trouble coming up with cases. It doesn't sound like behavior we'd all expect from a healthy community, does it? Similar to Texas, all this ordinance would do is promote gossip and innuendo to bring cases and stoke fear and confusion among citizens. Indeed, I would say that's its purpose. Any law that does that is clearly not civil, and in my view, is anti-American. Moreover, from the "A Company Frequently Asked Questions" documents, which quotes Bible verses, this ordinance appears to force all Rolla citizens to abide by beliefs of and live in fear imposed by a single religious sect. In addition, this ordinance doesn't seem like it would prevent any abortions other than through fear, again, unhealthy and not civil. From the ordinance, these hypothetical suits are described as being brought after the fact that an abortion was performed. And my other point is, the ordinance is not even-handed, in my view, and is the result of efforts by slick out-of-state lawyers trying to make a name for themselves. One big issue of this ordinance states that any person in Missouri other than officers, employees, or agents of state and local government entities has standing based on loss of consortium or emotional distress resulting from someone else's abortion to bring a lawsuit. Other major U.S. courts have already disagreed with those trying to overly stretch standing in this way. Other heinous clauses in this ordinance include, while claimants would be suing to get an amount of at least $100,000...
30 seconds, please.
...plus court costs and attorney's fees, the person being sued, even if wrongfully accused, would not be able to get his or her court costs and attorney's fees rewarded. I just see privacy issues being a big deal because the litigants would have to probably get discovery from someone who, the person that had personal health information from the person that had an abortion when they're not even a litigant in the suit. So as a taxpaying citizen, I feel this ordinance would deter people from moving to the Rolla area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Doug Center, Rapture and View Ministries, Phelps County. And just in front of you are two pictures. One of a baby in a womb, the other of Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood. Just again, great to hear what the Lord says about these matters. Psalm 127:3, "Behold, children of the Lord, the fruit of the womb a reward." Genesis 127, "So God created man in his own image; in the image of God he created him; male and female he created them." Interesting that yesterday, our government, our federal government, had to state that there's only two genders. Praise the Lord for that. Jeremiah 1:4-5, "Now the word of the Lord came to me, saying, 'Before I form you in the womb, I knew you; before you were born, I consecrated you; I appointed you a prophet to the nations.'" And then John 10:10 says, "The thief comes only to steal and kill and destroy. I came that they may have life and have it abundantly." And the problem with A3, as the previous speaker just mentioned, that, yeah, we really don't know what's in it, but when you do research it out, there are some terrible things that are in it. Things that don't include age limits and transgenderism, gender identity. There's, the Katie opens, I mean, the door is wide open with things that our community does not want, and where age limits and parents don't even have notification of these things happening to their children. So Margaret Sanger, October 16, 1916, opened the first illegal clinic, Brooklyn, New York. And she said things like this, "Birth control appeals to the advanced radical because it is calculated to undermine the authority of the Christian churches. I look forward to seeing humanity free someday of tyranny and Christianity, nihilism, and capitalism." Another thing she said, "The emergency problem of segregation and sterilization must be faced immediately. Every feeble-minded girl or woman of the hereditary type, especially of the moron class, should be segregated during the reproductive period. We prefer the policy of immediate sterilization of making sure that parenthood is absolutely prohibited to the feeble-minded." This has always been the goal of Planned Parenthood, of population control, and that's been the issue. It's never been about women's rights. They don't care about women, but that's been the goal. Here's another thing. The founder of Planned Parenthood, she said this, "The most merciful thing that a large family can do to one of its infant members is to kill it." Now, I find it very interesting that we just heard during the fluoride, to the fluoride debate, that Matt Fridley and Matthew Hahn both stated, "Why would we knowingly want to inflict harm to children? Why would we want small children who don't have a choice experience this?" Well, I'd say to you today...
Three minutes, Mr. Mayor.
...that these children don't have a choice, and you can make that choice here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Kathy Boyero. I'm here to ask you to make Rolla a sanctuary city. And the reason I'm asking you to do that is because Rolla's special. We're special because not only do we have just our residents, we have tons of residents that come from without our borders, and they come here to get an education at our wonderful college, at our wonderful university. Those people are in the age group who are making big decisions. And some of those decisions are scary, and some of those decisions are hard. And so if we help them make the right decisions and we give them some direction, I think we can protect not only the children that they could have, but also protect them. Because after an abortion, there's still a lot of pain that goes on. It's not something you see, it's not something you hear, but it happens. That woman goes through a lot of pain and a lot of guilt. And so we've heard tonight that if you make this area a sanctuary city, they're going to go underground and all of those things. That may happen, but that is a choice, and so they have choices to go other places. But you have a choice to make this city a city that's for life. I'm a teacher. Children are my life. If we don't have children, we don't have the ongoing of our society to take our places. And so I ask you to really consider this. We live in a republic, not a democracy. We live in a republic because we want to make the right decisions, not the decisions of the majority, the decisions that are right. And that's why yesterday, we celebrated a man who changed our world so that we could be better. So I would ask you to consider what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe Deverley, I am a resident of the city. So I had a thing already to say, but basically, all I'm going to say tonight is that this is about who gets to choose what happens to them. And in my opinion, and in many others' people's opinion, what happens to my body should be my choice with my health professional. And you all have an opportunity tonight, and all I'm going to say is, the folks that have come here from out of state hope that you're going to take the bait... ordinance permanently and any other ordinance that might do something similar in the future. Thank you.
Hi. Dr. Will Swickmeyer, I'm a Ralla resident, Ward 4. I appreciate the, the religious background there, and it's left me wondering, maybe we'll talk later about, I was unaware that during the floods that he, like, said all the babies and unborn and all that were going to survive. So that's really cool. I didn't know that. That's new. God never killed babies. Cool. Okay. Let's not waste time pretending the proposed ordinance targeting abortion-inducing drugs is about protecting anyone or serving the people of Ralla. It is not. This ordinance is about scoring cheap political points while gambling with our city's future, and it is absolutely shameful that it's even being, it's even being considered. You know this ordinance is illegal. Federal law explicitly overrides any attempt to regulate FDA-approved medications. It's not a gray area. It is black and white. If you pass this ordinance, you are knowingly violating the supremacy clause of the Constitution. Courts have struck down similar measures time and time again, and they'll do it again here. The difference is, Ralla will pay. Let's talk about that bill, because it's not small. Defending this ordinance will cost the taxpayers between $1 million and $3 million, money we can use on our roads, improve schools, expand public safety. Instead, you're prepared to waste all of it to push an ordinance you know will fail. It's not just reckless, it's insulting. But here's the part that you might not want to hear. It isn't just about the city's liability, it's about your liability as council members. If you vote for this ordinance, you could be held personally accountable, and I'm excited. Under 42 USC 1983, you could be sued as individuals for knowingly passing a law that violates federal rights. And don't think hiding behind your title will save you. Legislative immunity does not protect you from reckless or intentional violations of the law. Your personal finances, your assets, your internet browser history, and your reputations are on the line. Is it really worth it? Are you ready to explain to your families or the legislators you work for, Josh, that, why you expose them to one of the most expensive and embarrassing legal losses in Ralla's history? The truth is, it's not about protecting Ralla, it's about you. It's about appeasing a narrow base at the expense of everyone else. But here's the thing, you don't have to go through with this. Right now, you have the power to stop this ordinance. Any one of you can make a motion tonight to kill it. You can vote to withdraw it, postpone it indefinitely, or just admit it was a bad idea and move on.
Thirty seconds.
But if you don't, if you push forward despite every warning, then you'd better be ready for the consequences. You will face legal action. You will face financial fallout. And most importantly, you'll face the people of Ralla, who will not forget the names of the individuals who decided to betray their trust, waste their money on this political circus. So make your choice tonight, please. Do the right thing, kill this ordinance before it destroys your credibility and our city's future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Bergman. I'm from the Phelps County community. After the Amendment 3 abortion policy was put into our constitution for Missouri, that makes Missouri one of the most extreme abortion policies in any government in Western society. Let's talk about Europe, socialist Europe. Twenty-six countries, they do not allow abortion typically after 14 months, or 14 weeks. So 14 weeks. The abortion policy we have in Missouri is really bad. I mean, it does a lot of things. One of the things, it says abortion up to the age of fetal viability. So, that's about 24 weeks. So the socialist communities in Europe, Western society, they stop abortion after 14 weeks. So, A3, Amendment 3, is very extreme. It needs to be rescinded. The reason I'm speaking in support of this legislation for sanctuary cities is because A3 is so extreme. So, it increases the profit for Planned Parenthood because there is no liability. If you have an abortion, a botched abortion, those chemicals go bad, you can't sue anybody. Let's talk about fear mongering, fear for the parents of these 14-year-old girls, take a pill, get sick, and have damage to their bodies. You can't sue. That's part of the Amendment 3 legislation. So, I'm not going to take any more of your time, but those are my, my perspective. Missouri presently has, the government of Missouri has one of the most extreme abortion policies in Western society. Twenty-six European Union nations don't do abortion after 14 weeks. We're doing it after 24 weeks, up to 24 weeks. And fear mongering for those who vote for something, I, I don't, I don't think that's valid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
I'm Pamela Timson, Ralla, Ward 4. You all heard from me, you know what I think. I just want to add a little bit to what has been said as opposed to this action. And that is, in reading about, I've read very thoroughly the website of the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn, Ralla has not followed their guidance. Their guidance says they should have a majority of their citizens on board with this before it's even brought up. There should have been signatures taken and people committing that they were in favor of it. We needed to have our mayor in favor of it, our city leaders in favor of it. I don't know how many of you are in favor of this. But I do want to point out, as far as the city of Ralla, when we voted on Amendment 3, Ralla city voters voted for Amendment 3. We're the ones who vote for you.
Carrie Cron, I live in Phelps County. So I did send this message to the council members, but I thought I would also read it today. I'm speaking about, I am opposed to the Sanctuary City for the Unborn ordinance. I think local government should be focused on issues that are about running the city. So let's run the city effectively and efficiently. I believe that that is this body's job. The introduction and promotion of this ordinance is coming from outside the city. We're being led by someone coming into our, our city that does not live here, he has no ties here, and yet he is trying to get us to go down this road. As others have said, it is very likely, almost a sure thing, that we are going to be sued. We spent, I don't know, a lot of time here today already talking about budgeting. We might as well not have even talked about it. You are going to spend more money defending yourselves and the city if this ordinance is adopted than you've spent in probably all year. So I don't have any idea why we would go down this road. I agree with the person that just talked. We've talked a lot about what our people that we're representing want here, what you are representing. They voted for Amendment 3. So as much as people may not like that or may not agree with that, I believe I still live in a democracy. I think that what people voted for is at least relevant to the discussion. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Haley Kramer, and I'm a family nurse practitioner. I've worked in sexual and reproductive health care for nearly 20 years and have proudly served Ralla residents for nearly half of that time. First with Tri-Rivers Family Planning, and now at our local Planned Parenthood Health Center. Throughout my career, I provided comprehensive reproductive health care from STI testing, that's sexually transmitted infections, and treatment, to cervical cancer screenings and annual wellness exams and more. The opportunity to care for a community, to prevent disease, foster health, and support healthy family planning, regardless of insurance status or ability to pay, has been so personally meaningful and profoundly impactful here in Ralla. I wanted to say, I also, I not, I do not live in Ralla, but I send my son to school here and work here. I live in Mary's County. The ordinance under consideration by this body will, without question, harm this community. I work, support our local businesses, and send my son to school. I guess I already was going to say that. I care deeply about this community. I, like you, have been and remain invested in Ralla. Years of caring for the people of Ralla and surrounding communities has made it abundantly clear, we need more access to health care, not less. Missouri continues to struggle with maternal mortality, and for every tragic death, there are thousands of near misses. The few providers of sexual and reproductive health care in this community also know we face an epidemic of sexually transmitted infections. Of the 114 counties in Missouri, Phelps ranks 36th. We need more access, not more intimidation, more threats, and more meddling from out-of-state special interests. As a local provider with roots in the community and a demonstrated commitment to improving the health of Ralla residents, I'm asking you to see this ordinance for what it is, a dangerous intrusion from the outside and an attempt to politicize the public health of our community. Ralla residents support access to reproductive health, as was just noted, and they made that clear in the recent Amendment 3 votes. I love our community, and I know you do too. It would truly be tragic if an ordinance like this ended up pushing health care further out of reach for more residents, worsening sexually transmitted infection rates and making planning healthy pregnancies more difficult. I would love one day to be standing in front of you and supporting a shared vision for public health excellence. I'm here to work with you and for the thousands just like you that I've had the privilege to care for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Andrew Giger. I'm a Ward 4 voter, and I 100% echo what Dr. Swickmeyer said. I went to Ralla High School and DePaul Law School. I can totally attest, the ACLU is not playing around. The, they will come down here and they're probably looking for a chance, honestly. I think a lot of people on this council would champion small government. This is not small government. This is taking the choices out of voters' hands, out of citizens' hands, and putting on you. And some of you aren't running for reelection. You can be held liable, you will be held liable personally. The city doesn't want this attention. I'm glad so many people are out participating in local government. This is important stuff. But stuff like this, it's got to stop, and I urge you guys to vote against this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, good evening. My name is Heath Petrie. I am a voting member in Ward 1. Good to see you again. I'm just kidding, I didn't want to be here two weeks after. That's your guys' job, not mine. Now that being said, a couple of things that we want to point out. We keep pointing, as was said before by Counselor Vroman, we're pointing to the Comstock Act. That's, that's our rule right there. Forgive my animation. However, the Comstock Act has been limited time and time again by federal judge after federal judge. One, that it's easier to read the DOJ's report than it is to actually read the case, because that's lawyer stuff. I'm sorry, man, I can't do that. Power to you. A federal judge stated that the sender could only be held liable if they mailed or shipped by common carrier for use of illegal contraception or abortion, or for indecent or immoral purposes. Now, keep, keep in mind, that does state specifically illegal uses. Hey, we passed Amendment 3. Abortion's legal now. That's, sure, it might not have been on the Missouri constitution that you read, because it hasn't updated on the Missouri website yet. But Amendment 3 directly changes the, I think, first section or first article in the Amendment Bill of Rights. So keep that in mind. It also states that no government, and it does mention city councils as being part of that, may infringe upon that. That's all for this evening, counsel. Thank you very much. I thought I had more to say, but I'm pretty happy stating that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adam Block. I work and pastor in Ralla, or live in Ralla as well, and I just want to speak out in favor of saving lives. Any chance you can do that? I think liability is too big of an idol in America, and it is good to protect the innocent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Other. I'm a resident of Phelps County. I'm glad you were born, and I'm in support of this motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, will you see if there's anybody out there that wants to speak? Just in case they can't hear us or see us.
Someone in here.
Mayor, Councilman. Brad Armstrong, I live here in Ralla, Ward 4. I just want to say that I do voice my lack of support for the proposal. I think the ordinance is foolish. I think it will really bring some consequences to the town, both legally, that will have an impact on us. And as a businessperson in the general area, it also will have an impact on our ability to recruit. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Markley Dixon, non-resident of the city. You've heard a lot of things tonight, and for me to take time to address the misinformation that's personal attacks and everything, I just don't have time for that. So what I will say is this, there are 70 cities in eight counties that have passed these ordinances. If you look at those 70 cities, how many times has the ACLU sued those cities? You got seven cities in East Texas that were sued by the ACLU, lasted three months, didn't cost those citizens one cent, because the ACLU lost. ACLU sued the city of Lubbock, population 264,000. The ACLU lost. ACLU sued a city in Lebanon, Ohio. They lost. That's all the lawsuits that the ACLU has brought against cities. ACLU sued me in the Texas Heartbeat Act, went to Supreme Court of the United States, online justices agreed the case against me should be dismissed. So when I hear this fear mongering about the ACLU's going to sue you personally, guys, I've been there. And there's not one city council member in those 70 cities that has been sued by the ACLU or any entity. So I don't know where some of the things are coming about that I'm hearing, but I can tell you that it's not true. The opportunity that you have before you is to stand up and do what
And as a businessperson in the general area, it also will have an impact on our ability to recruit. Thanks.
Thank you.
Markley Dixon, non-resident of the city. You've heard a lot of things tonight, and for me to take time to address the misinformation that's personal attacks and everything, I just don't have time for that. So what I will say is this: There are 70 cities in eight counties that have passed these ordinances. If you look at those 70 cities, how many times has the ACLU sued those cities? You got seven cities in East Texas that were sued by the ACLU, lasted three months, didn't cost those citizens one cent, because the ACLU lost. ACLU sued the city of Lubbock, population 264,000. The ACLU lost. ACLU sued a city in Lebanon, Ohio. They lost. That's all the lawsuits that the ACLU has brought against cities. ACLU sued me in the Texas Heartbeat Act, went to Supreme Court of the United States, online justices agreed the case against me should be dismissed. So when I hear this fear mongering about the ACLU's going to sue you personally, guys, I've been there. And there's not one city council member in those 70 cities that has been sued by the ACLU or any entity. So I don't know where some of the things are coming about that I'm hearing, but I can tell you that it's not true. The opportunity that you have before you is to stand up and do what you believe is right. If you believe that innocent life is worth protecting, if you believe that this 18U.S.C. 1461 and 1462, known as the Comstock Act, and the partial birth abortion ban of 1531, if you believe those were passed by Congress to protect innocent children and their moms and communities, and you support that, then I encourage you to support passing this ordinance. If you don't believe that...
30 seconds.
If you maybe believe, like someone here suggested, that God kills babies, if you are pro-choice or pro-abortion, then definitely I encourage you to vote against this, because this would go against those beliefs. I thank you for your time, and my last encouragement to you guys is to just hate evil, love good, and do what's right. Establish justice within your city gate. Thank you so much.
I'm Susan Jordan. I'm from Salem, Missouri. Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah.
All right. Do you know what the number one cause of death in the whole world is? Abortion. It's the number one cause of death. So you have a choice. What is a life worth? What is each of our lives worth? You have a choice. I've heard a lot of good comments from you all that you care about people. Babies are people. You have an opportunity to help save the babies, so I hope you will make that choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Marcy Thomas. I am from Salem proper, but I have worked at MS&amp;T, and I have kids that live here in Rolla, and we come to Rolla several times a week. So what goes on in Rolla, you know, is relevant to us too, even though we're in Dent County. I'm also the executive director of Riverways Pregnancy and Family Resource Center in Salem, and we've been open for 22 years, working with women who are in unexpected pregnancy situations and trying to offer them, remove the barriers that would cause them to choose abortion for themselves and their baby. I am also post-abortive. Ironically, in 1985, at this time, probably at about this time, I would have conceived my son, who would have been 40 this year in October. So I know firsthand the trauma of what it means to have made that decision and have had to live with the consequences of that decision, knowing I took my child's life. Now that chemical abortion, which really is the issue here at hand, the availability and the proliferation of chemical abortion, now that that is available, I can only imagine the horror of, let's say, your 15-year-old daughter or granddaughter or neighbor's daughter who has found out she's in an unplanned pregnancy situation and gets the pills because she can't bear the thought of her parents knowing that she's pregnant. And if you don't know the protocol, it's a two-pill situation. They give you one pill, misoprostal, which actually starves the baby in the uterus. So it's now being robbed of the nutrients that would cause it to live, and then that's mifepristone, and then misoprostal actually is taken like two days later, which causes uterine contractions that would expel the baby. This will happen in their bathrooms, in your bathrooms. It will happen in dorm rooms. The woman will profusely bleed, profusely. This isn't a period, and it's not Tylenol. It creates severe contractions, severe cramping, the possible of hemorrhage, the possible of fetal tissue remaining in the womb is a very real concern. And so this is what we are saying: Yes, we want our teenage daughters to have this. This is the best we can do for them and their situations. I think we can do better. I think we can do better on many fronts. And so I am just imploring you to think of your neighbors, your children, your grandchildren. What kind of care would you want them to receive? Would you want them to have that kind of availability and suffer the loss of their baby by themselves in the fetal position, on the floor, or in the bathtub, knowing that they're passing a little clump that looks like a forming child? And knowing the emotional impact of them holding...
30 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
...or flushing their own child down the toilet. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rachel Schneider. I just wanted to take a second, I'm not gonna speak long, I just wanted to remind you of the specific language in Missouri Constitution, Amendment Three that was recently passed. Section Five. No person shall be penalized, prosecuted, or otherwise subjected to adverse action based on their actual potential perceived or alleged pregnancy outcomes, including but not limited to miscarriage, stillbirth, or abortion. Nor shall any person assisting a person in exercising their right to reproductive freedom with that person's consent be penalized, prosecuted, or otherwise subjected to adverse action for doing so. I know you guys are familiar, right? Of course, federalism, federal law, Trump's state law, but state law also trumps municipal law and governs what you, as a statutory city, can do. I would encourage you not to directly challenge that and leave the city open to potential lawsuits and damage and harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Zach Toski, a student here, grad student. Moved here initially in 2013, left for a while and came back to do a PhD. And one thing that I've noticed is that engineers don't really like politics. They don't care, they don't pay attention. So whenever you start getting text messages from your friends who are also engineers elsewhere in the state, there's probably something that's going on. You're probably doing something wrong, because for them to actually take the time to notice and text you and go, "Hey, what's up with your crazy city council? What are you guys doing?" You've probably gone astray a little bit. So I kinda want you guys to know that it's not just in Rolla, like, people outside of here see what's going on, and whatever you guys decide, we're gonna pay the price too, because we also live here. And the people who come here get their degree, what you guys do is gonna tack onto that. So if you give us a bad name and make us look kinda ridiculous, you probably don't wanna go to school here. And that's just kinda how it's gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emilia Barbosa. I live here in Rolla, Missouri, and I teach at S&amp;T. I just want to say that it occurs to me that maybe the city should be focusing on efficient ruling and governing, and why not create a sanctuary for the homeless, for example? We are under bitter cold circumstances this winter. I just came from the library, which is make-do kind of shelter. I think we have bigger problems already in our hands than go on some kind of crusade that it's not even our own. We voted to uphold Proposition Three, and I hope that you uphold the law and the people's will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank everyone.
I tend to wait till the end, because I like to collect my information. Melissa Jones, youth pastor of Rolla Church of the Nazarene. I sit here, and I think, and I will add this, thank you, my sister, for being able to say it first, post-abortive. I think of myself at 20, absolutely terrified of what some people would think about the fact that I was pregnant, living in a state that banned it, by the way. So drove two hours by myself, stayed in probably the seediest hotel ever, went into a facility that was definitely well-established in doing its job, was never allowed to see my child, was never allowed to hear the heartbeat. They did an ultrasound just to make sure that you hit the parameters, which, by the way, why was 21-ish weeks? That means that they do this process where they use sticks to inflate and force your cervix to dilate and put you into active labor. And then the next morning, by the way, knock you out with heroin, the technical, chemical version, doctoral version, because I got told that when I was done, and then remove the baby from you. And yes, I lived with that. I have two beautiful children that I gave birth to after that. But there are also other bodily effects that aren't noted and haven't been mentioned: the increased ability of breast cancer, because you have cells that have begun to form because they were meant to feed a baby, and they now don't know what to do, because the body didn't naturally in the process. We forced it to. You know how many screenings for mammograms that I have to go through before the age of 40 for breast cancer scares? I wouldn't wish that on anybody, anybody. I would love to stand here and say that I would champion this ordinance to the hilt, but my fear is that I don't see an accurate way to enforce it. And my question and my, what I would like to hear and what I would like to be informed on is exactly how it could be enforced, because I don't want to...
30 seconds.
...throw something out there that gives a bunch of people, like me as a youth pastor, I'd love to be like, yay, brah, none of my teen girls could get a hold of a pill. But I got a hold of an abortion in the wrong place, too. And I know, for me, this makes it even more scary. I want to know the enforceability, because that's really where it lands for me. I want it to be able to be enforced, and I don't want to pass something that's just gonna sit on paper and not actually gonna be able to make a difference. So I think there's still more information that needs to be gathered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank everyone for taking the time. Moving on to mayor and city council comments, we have one scheduled, and that's Counsel Persson-Broman.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to talk about, well, if I can find it, making Rolla a sanctuary city for the unborn. I want to take the time to explain the ordinance and answer some questions that everyone has had over the last couple of months. One of the first questions that was asked, and it was by the mayor, was why, why does Rolla need this? Well, number one, we are delegated the power to preserve the safety, health, peace, good order, comfort, convenience, morals, and welfare of all inhabitants within the city of Rolla, ensuring that federal prohibitions on the shipment of abortion pills and abortion-related paraphernalia are obeyed, as well as partial birth abortion bans. Another reason why is because we took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the statutory provisions codified in 18U.S.C. 1461 and 62 and 18U.S.C. 1531 are the supreme law of the land under Article Six of the Constitution and must be respected and obeyed by every person within the city of Rolla. The Constitution and laws of Missouri do not and cannot secure a right, privilege, or immunity to act in violation of federal criminal statutes such as 18U.S.C. 1461-62 and 18U.S.C. 1531. This ordinance protects public health and welfare. It ensures compliance with federal law. It reinforces Rolla's leadership role, and it is consistent with Rolla's history of aligning local ordinances with federal standards. Before I go any further, if you're taking notes, I want you to write these numbers down, so you can look them up later. Chapter 20, Article Two, Sections 20-11 through 20-14 of the Rolla Municipal Code, and reference that with 42U.S.C. 3601 through 3619.
Slow down. We're writing it down.
Sorry. So Sections 20 through 11 through 20-14 of the Rolla Municipal Code, and we're gonna cross-reference that with 42U.S.C. 9601, and that is hazardous waste. So I'm gonna continue on. Under Chapter 20, Article Two, Section 20-11 through 20-14 is an example. We align our local ordinances with 42U.S.C. 3601 through 3619, the Fair Housing Act. While the ordinance does not enforce federal law directly, it establishes a local standard that aligns with federal law and operates independently within Rolla's municipal authority to promote fair housing. This ordinance that we already have on the books complements federal law without conflicting with it, ensuring that Rolla supports compliance with national standards while addressing local needs. We also have the ADA standard scattered and embedded in our ordinances, which aligns with 42U.S.C. 12101. We have many different ordinances that align with 18U.S.C. 921, which is over firearms. We have ordinances that align with Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation and Liability Act, or CIRCLA for short, which can be found under 35-230 of our city code, which mirrors 42U.S.C. 9601. I say all that to say that if Rolla can adopt ordinances that align with federal statutes like the Fair Housing Act, the ADA, firearms, and CIRCLA, we can absolutely adopt an ordinance that aligns with 18U.S.C. 1461-62 and 18U.S.C. 1531 that prohibit the shipping and receiving of abortion pills or abortion-related paraphernalia in interstate or foreign commerce. I want to explain that we are not creating an ordinance to give standing in federal court. We cannot do that. What we are doing is creating an ordinance that mirrors the federal statutes, and we can absolutely create a standing in state court. As an example, Section 20-14, write this one down, too, 20-14, B as in Bravo, of the Rolla City Code, the code that mirrors 42U.S.C. 3601 through 3619. It states, "The city attorney, instead of filing a complaint in municipal court of said city, may, as an alternative remedy, seek to have the alleged discriminatory practices abated by an action for an injunction to be maintained in the appropriate circuit court of the state of Missouri." So what we did there with the Fair Housing Act was we took a federal law and we mirrored it, and then we gave standing in a state court. There had been questions about the private right of action, and I would like to explain this. Because this is an ordinance created by the city of Rolla under the authority granted to us from Chapter 77 of the revised statutes of Missouri, we have the implied authority to choose how to enforce this ordinance. We are choosing to empower citizens through private enforcement mechanisms rather than relying on government enforcement. This allows... going to continue on. Under Chapter 20, Article 2, Section 20-11 through 20-14 is an example. We align our local ordinances with 42 U.S.C. 3601 through 3619, the Fair Housing Act. While the ordinance does not enforce federal law directly, it establishes a local standard that aligns with federal law and operates independently within Rolla's municipal authority to promote fair housing. This ordinance that we already have on the books complements federal law without conflicting with it, ensuring that Rolla supports compliance with national standards while addressing local needs. We also have the ADA standard scattered and embedded in our ordinances, which aligns with 42 U.S.C. 12101. We have many different ordinances that align with 18 U.S.C. 921, which is over firearms. We have ordinances that align with Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation and Liability Act, or CIRCLA for short, which can be found under 35-230 of our city code, which mirrors 42 U.S.C. 9601. I say all that to say that if Rolla can adopt ordinances that align with federal statutes like the Fair Housing Act, the ADA, firearms, and CIRCLA, we can absolutely adopt an ordinance that aligns with 18 U.S.C. 1461-62 and 18 U.S.C. 1531 that prohibit the shipping and receiving of abortion pills or abortion-related paraphernalia in interstate or foreign commerce. I want to explain that we are not creating an ordinance to give standing in federal court. We cannot do that. What we are doing is creating an ordinance that mirrors the federal statutes, and we can absolutely create a standing in state court. As an example, Section 20-14, write this one down, too, 20-14, B as in Bravo, of the Rolla City Code, the code that mirrors 42 U.S.C. 3601 through 3619, it states, "The city attorney, instead of filing a complaint in municipal court of said city, may, as an alternative remedy, seek to have the alleged discriminatory practices abated by an action for an injunction to be maintained in the appropriate circuit court of the state of Missouri." So what we did there with the Fair Housing Act was we took a federal law and we mirrored it, and then we gave standing in a state court. There had been questions about the private right of action, and I would like to explain this. Because this is an ordinance created by the city of Rolla under the authority granted to us from Chapter 77 of the revised statutes of Missouri, we have the implied authority to choose how to enforce this ordinance. We are choosing to empower citizens through private enforcement mechanisms rather than relying on government enforcement. This allows citizens to directly address violations of the ordinance without burdening city resources. Similar approaches have been successful and upheld in other jurisdictions. By using this mechanism, which strictly prohibits city officials from enforcing the ordinance, Rolla avoids exposure to lawsuits or claims under Amendment 3 or constitutional challenges, because, given the restrictions imposed by Amendment 3, public enforcement would absolutely expose the city to potential lawsuits. Passing an ordinance is a legislative function. We cannot be sued simply because we passed this ordinance. We will not be violating anyone's rights or directly enforcing the ordinance. This all stems from a case in Louisiana, if you want, write this one down. It's called Okpaloobi v. Foster. That's A-O, I'm sorry, O-K-P-A-L-O-B-I-V. Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R, which was a law that the state of Louisiana passed that allowed private individuals to sue doctors for damages caused by abortions, where the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that state officials could not be sued to stop enforcement of the law because they had no direct enforcement role. This is important because there is a lot of talk about suing us if we pass this, and I want you to know that even though we may be sued, there is precedent set forth from previous cases that shield us as long as we are not enforcing this ordinance through the city. And I want to express that nothing in this proposed ordinance will change anything about the standard of care currently being provided by healthcare professionals in labor and delivery in Rolla, Missouri. If you read Sections 43.001 and 43.004 and see that it gives exemptions for ectopic pregnancy, miscarriages, it gives exemptions for birth control, fertility treatments, Plan B, and to save the life or preserve the health of the mother and/or unborn child. That is what this ordinance says. A mother, and I want to continue on, a mother who had or is seeking an abortion, any person who is performing an abortion under federal law, any common carrier that transports a pregnant woman to an abortion provider that is unaware that the woman intends to abort her child cannot be sued under this ordinance. Also, a lawsuit may not be brought by any person who impregnated a woman seeking an abortion through an act of rape, sexual assault, or incest, or by someone who acts in concert or participation with such a person. This ordinance aligns with Rolla's longstanding tradition of promoting public health, supporting compliance with federal law, and protecting our community's values. It provides a thoughtful and legally sound framework for addressing a serious issue while ensuring that Rolla remains within its legal authority. And I urge you to support this ordinance and stand with me in protecting public health, defending the sanctity of life, and upholding the principles we swore to, uh, to serve.
Is there any further discussion?
I just, I, go ahead, Nathan.
I just had questions for Nathan.
All right.
Um, the Comstock Act, does it explicitly prohibit the mailing of abortion pills?
Sorry.
It does it? I'm asking.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the Attorney General came and
Gave the, the opinion that there is room in that field.
No. He said, at risk of his
Well, I was going to put it in a question form, so that's what I mean. I wasn't trying to
Well, he didn't say there's room. What he said is, you can pass a law that's not inconsistent with state law.
He gave the opinion that the field had not been fully occupied.
He didn't answer that question. He just said, you can pass, the opinion of the Attorney General, you can pass a law that's not inconsistent with state law.
And do you feel this ordinance would do so?
Yes, it isn't, it is not, it is not consistent with state law.
Nathan Nicholas, can you give us an update on the Jackson County Court case regarding Amendment 3 anti-abortion laws?
Not really. There's, you know, you're aware the injunction was issued.
Yes.
Um, and so currently, the anti-abortion laws of the state of Missouri have all been struck down with a couple of exceptions. Uh, and the state is prohibited under that injunction from enforcing those. Obviously, the legislature has not replaced those with anything. Uh, I assume that that will be appealed, but as far as I know, an appeal has not yet been filed.
Do you feel this ordinance effectively mirrors the Comstock Act?
Uh, in parts, yes.
But not in whole?
It contains things that are not in the Comstock Act.
And those would be what, the exceptions?
Uh, the exceptions are one, but also the private cause of action is not in the Comstock Act.
Well, correct. We can, but neither is the enforcement mechanism that is for the Fair Housing Act that we created either.
Well, his question was, does it mirror? No.
You're saying there's differences between them?
Okay.
And, and there's, there's a clear difference between what you're talking about with the Federal Housing Act or ADA or those other things and this. None of those create a private law cause of action. In fact, I'm not aware of any ordinance of any city that has done that, and the case you cite is of a state statute. Clearly, states can create private law cause of actions in half, in not only Louisiana, Texas, and several other states. States obviously could do that, but can cities. And I've yet to see anybody bring me a case that says a city can.
I, I believe that it is, we have the implied authority to create what enforcement mechanisms that we choose.
I understand that belief.
[laughing]
Seriously, it's, it's a legitimate belief, but, but I just don't think that's going to hold up in court.
Um, in your opinion, this may be beyond your scope, but it's part of the questions I have. Legally, would this have accidental consequences, like not being able to get meds that are used for abortion but are also used for other intended uses, the way that it's worded? And that's really what I'm reaching into.
Yeah.
Legally, not fear-based, but legally, would it actually prevent that from occurring?
As I understand the Comstock Act, and as I understand this ordinance, no, it would not prevent that from occurring, because I do not believe the Comstock Act prohibits transport of these same drugs for legal purposes.
And you still take the stance that this would be questionable about the private, even having the right to do a private right of action? Is that what, is that what I'm understanding you to say?
I am very, very cautious about that, and also what court, if you did create that private law of action, cause of action, what court that would be in. I, I have a hard time conceiving that the city has the ability to create a cause of action in a state court. It probably, if we could create it at all, it would certainly be in the municipal court. But I don't know, we could tell the circuit courts what to do.
Is the Comstock Act being upheld at any level?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. And actually, there was a speaker who said that it wasn't.
That's what I was wondering.
That's not true. The Comstock Act has been upheld by courts. It is regularly used, particularly the obscene materials side of it. I, I don't really know. I haven't seen any cases about using it for, uh, on the abortion side of things, or the contraceptive side of things, but on the, uh, it is regularly used to prosecute people for child pornography.
Can I circle back one more time? Because to me, it's probably the, the biggest
I'm here at your time.
Well, I understand.
Yes.
Back to the Attorney General.
Let me read it, because it's what I had, because it's what I understood, but whether this is true or not is a big deal to me. The Attorney General, Iroh, does believe that the field of abortion has not been filled fully in Missouri by Amendment 3 and that there is room for local interpretation. That was my understanding of what he said.
That's not what I heard.
You disagree with that?
Well, I do, because, and I can't remember the citation. The citation that I was telling you guys about says that they intend to clearly occupy the entire field. So that would seem to be what we call field preemption. So it would seem that that's, that's what they're doing. Despite what the Attorney General may say on that subject, it's hard for me to argue that this isn't what this legislature intended, that they, that they intended to be the sole determiner of abortion in the state.
Right. And I understood that was your opinion the whole time.
Yeah.
My understanding is the Attorney General's office disagreed with that.
Absolutely.
So you are agreeing that they disagreed with you on, on
Yes.
...that had been fully occupied?
I, I don't think that's what he said, okay? But yes, that's certainly what he intended to say.
Okay. Because when I came into that meeting, and this is sincerity, I, I had no intentions of trying to fight a local battle against Amendment 3 if that battle really needed to occur at a state level. It wasn't until the Attorney General's office came and said that, I, I was ready to be like, okay, we need to move on. This, this battle needs to occur at a different level. Like, we don't need to discuss whether we're for it or against it. We have no room to discuss this.
Well, yeah, sure. I, I mean, so, so I would say the Attorney General and I disagree with the courts. I'll tell you two things that I know as a lawyer. Number one, what the courts always say about the Attorney General opinion is, you're not entitled to any more significance than any other attorney's opinion. Uh, and secondly, that if you get two attorneys in the same room, you'll get three opinions.
Right.
[laughing]
I guess my last one would have to do with lawsuits. There's a lot of that thrown around.
I have to say, I agree with Josh. The, the city, I think, could be sued, okay? But you all as individuals, I, I think, I don't think 42 U.S.C. 1983 would support that. Um, is it possible that you could ever be sued under 42 U.S.C. 1983? Sure, I never like to say anything's impossible, but I, I'm not aware of any case where individual councilmen have been sued under that. It's the city. It's, you would have, you have to, what, what 1983 says is that you violated someone's civil rights under color of law, okay? And so usually it's against individuals. So you'd have to show that somehow an individual city councilman had done something beyond just voting for an ordinance. And I don't even know what that would be. So I would say I would not worry about you all being personally sued. I think that's, I can never say never. You know, you never, you never get me to say never, but it's, I would categorize it as extremely unlikely.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Nathan, I asked you some questions earlier tonight, and this whole subject is rather nuanced. So let me make sure I understood them correctly. If this passes, could somebody sue a young lady if she ordered these medicines?
So, I was looking at the ordinance a little bit more since I talked to you, and it does exempt out, if the woman is pregnant or, or, or is, is, has done an abortion or is planning to do an abortion, she is exempt from the law. So no, the young lady could not be sued. But the person, any person who provided her those pills, which would be either, say, a friend, or even, you know, FedEx or something like that, they could be sued.
Okay. So somebody totally unrelated to this young woman could sue FedEx for delivering this medicine?
Yes.
If.
And can sue a person for ordering it?
Yes.
And
Josh wants to disagree, though.
If the common carrier is aware.
Now, that's only on, on if you're transporting.
I'm asking the questions here. Hold on. Can an uninterested third party sue a local pharmacist or a local pharmacy?
Yes.
Could a totally uninterested person sue the pharmacy at Phelps Health?
Yes.
Okay.
There's exemptions in there for that.
I don't, you know, I didn't see that. I, I heard you say that, but I don't see
43.004, Section 3.
Would you say that again, Josh?
43.004, Section 3. We specifically put this in there. That was the difference between the last meeting and this one.
Okay. So B is life of the mother?
Uh, A and B.
Oh, not intended to. Okay. Okay, that's what you're saying, that, yeah. So, yeah, so it has a, a mental state, that you had to have intended it to do that. Although, I would say that if that's the case, for instance, let's say you wanted to sue CVS for providing those drugs. You would have to prove that they knew that, that a particular woman was going to use them for that purpose.
Mm-hmm.
How would they know that? How would you prove that? It's not enough to show that she actually did use them for that purpose. You'd have to say they knew in advance that this woman was going to come in and do it.
Correct.
How would you prove that?
You can't.
You can't. So then what's the point of the whole thing?
I want you to sue a pharmacist.
Well, doesn't that get the whole law?
This is where I'm having trouble with this. It's unenforceable. So
You know, folks, I sit here and I hear everything. We can't be sued. We got all these exemptions, blah, 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 blah. What is it, what are we doing?
So, all right, so
Every time I turn around, I get, well, don't worry about this. Well, don't worry about this. Okay, so why are we doing this? So, Mayor, I just, I just want to say, this has put all of us on the council in a position where we have to look at our own faith to some degree and, and, and think about that as you have a conversation. I don't ever want someone to think that I'm pro-abortion, but you've put me on a council, Josh, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to attack you, but you need to hear this. I'm on a council on a body
You're right.
...where there's an activist ordinance going in front of us. And I respect the fact that we, I, I would give anything if abortions didn't have to happen or didn't happen at all. But I don't think it's any place, any position, and I said this at the last council meeting, we're out of our lane. This needed to be taken care of at the state level, and it should have been done the right way. And if it didn't happen there, then it is the law. And so for, for you to ask me to look at my own faith, but, and vote for this, but yet think about the law, which I have to follow as well, it's, it's a dichotomy that just creates all kinds of controversy in, in my character. And, and for me, I think the smart thing to do is to table this. So I'm making a motion to table this and remove it from the agenda.
Second. I second.
And I, I said, I don't think that lightly, because I don't ever, I, I would never, you know, there was a young man, there was, there have been people that have come up to me, and I never would have thought a, a pro-choice person would have come to me and say, I, I can't believe what you said, because a, a lot of us, you know, there's a lot of tension between both sides, and I understand that. But I say this because I don't think this is the right place, the right time, or the right avenue to do that. So that's why I made the motion. I want it gone. I want us to focus on the police department. I want us to focus on the budget, the positive things in our community that we need to work on to continue to make our community a better place. And I don't want to focus for the next six months on an ordinance that, quite frankly, will probably be null and void when it goes through the courts. So, and there's a second.
And so it's, we do have discussion time? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this has been really hard. I agree with what Matt said. It's been very challenging because I feel like it's ambiguous and confusing. Um, why do we want to create more confusion about these medications when they're used for other medical purposes? Doesn't that make things more challenging for the healthcare providers here? We heard from an outstanding healthcare provider in this community that I can't ignore. I cannot ignore her. And based on someone's opinion, again, who's not an attorney, saying, this will uphold. But our attorney saying something different is very challenging. I can't ignore that, what she said. I can't ignore that, what she said. I've talked to several nurses, I've listened to conversations about this. The medications that we're trying to prohibit through the mail are used for more than what we are aware of. There are situations that we aren't thinking about when passing such an ordinance. Many people come to this community for care. People come from distances away. What if they're required to have that mailed to them? They don't, they don't get mail here, or they have to go somewhere else, or they live here, and whatever the situation is, it, none of these things are sure. How are those people going to be protected that need those medicines? What's the easiest and best for the doctors to send these medications to their patients? Because that's what that situation calls for. I think that there's far more unexpected consequences than we realize, and we have to consider the people that those unexpected consequences affect. I don't want to restrict or be involved in those matters that doctors have to decide. I don't, I don't want to. Why would we want to create more confusion in that regard? And I, again, the opinion and the doctor that's come forward here is highly, she's part of our community. I don't want to create a community that medical providers don't want to be in or stay in, and other professionals for that matter. I think it's questionable, it's ambiguous, and I'm a pro-life person, and I don't understand it. I'm, I hear your heart, I see what you're trying to do. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to say that.
So, I would like to... Sorry. I, I'll defer. Go ahead, and I'll go after you, that's fine.
All right. I just want to start out by saying, I am extremely, you know, I know we've all said we're pro-life. I, with Amendment Three, worked really, really hard to try to educate people as much as possible. I put signs up, I talked to my neighbors, I, you know, did, did everything that I could think of, because I felt Amendment Three was very manipulative, and I felt that there was a lot of stuff in there, other than just, you know, abortion. And, you know, I want to protect life at any cost. But I've also done a lot, a lot of research, extensive research on this ordinance, and I've carefully weighed out whether it would generally, that it would, if it would generally, genuinely save lives, and, or just be, you know, a symbolic gesture. And I think that this ordinance, I think it gives false hope to us, to pro-life individuals. It does. Because of, I think it lacks practical enforcement. I think that, you know, there's not a way to enforce it. Seventy cities and eight counties, and there's not been one citizen action. There, there really is no enforcement behind it. And so, you know, I heard you snicker there for a second, so it bothers me, as someone who's pro-life, that comes into my community and gives false hope. That bothers me. That runs right through me, because I love this community, and I love the citizens in it, and I will bend over backwards for them. And so, it bothers me, all of us that have been kicked, kicked in the stomach with Amendment Three, and then to bring false hope to us? That, that breaks my heart. And I'm also deeply troubled by what's happening behind the scenes, because, you know, there's a lot of manipulation, and there's a lot of manipulation towards council members. And, you know, this community knows me as a very, very, maybe overly transparent person sometimes, but I'm not, I'm not a politician, so I'm not, I'm not as, you know, crafty with my wording, so I may say things that sometimes, you know, will offend someone. But when I research things, I follow the money, I follow the agenda, and for the sake of transparency to myself, because we're all co-council people, I should, I should be able to know, you know, what's going on. And for the sake of the community, I would really like to know which one of my colleagues has had, has spoken with Jonathan Mitchell. And, and actually, like, honestly, I'll go first, I have not, and no one here has to really answer that question in the moment, but if you feel deep down that that was wrong, then you should really think about what we're doing here. And, yeah, that's, that's honestly, that's, that's what I have to say. I've also, another thing that, you know, bothers me, is I've heard statements like individuals that do take a stand and show courage, that when it comes time for them to be, you know, re-elected or whatnot, that not only will people pray for us, but that they'll, they'll put their pocketbooks out. And I'm not, I am not good with that. I want to protect life as much as possible, but I truly believe that this gives us false hope. So I, I am not going to be in favor of continued discussion with this form.
I have one, another comment or question that someone asked me, and they were being honest when they asked. Tina, tell me how, tell me how this makes a sanctuary city for the unborn, how? All it's doing is supposedly is pulling down federal regulation into the state to prevent mailing. How is that, even the name on it, this bothered this person? I had no answer for that. I had no answer for that, you guys.
I understand the why. The why is because we went, you know, when the mayor was asking that before I'm over here, just, I understand the why. Everybody who, you know, was devastated with Amendment Three, that's, that's the why. They want to protect life. And, you know, it's the, the how, the enforcement side of it. There's nothing there.
So, yeah, and I, I agree with a lot of what's been said there. I think that, I think this is a really tough situation that we're in, or I can feel, I can tell, I can talk for myself, because I feel like I would do anything for the pro-life movement that was productive, but I don't feel like this is productive. I think that this, passing this ordinance would be a sugar high. We'd feel great and high-five each other, and hug, and have a great time, and then the reality would set down, and we'd have a sugar crash, and realize that what we've passed is something that's not really practically going to be enforced. And I like what somebody said, what you said about the enforcement issue. So, I think, as our community of people who are just, just like Megan, that put signs up, talked to people, and did those things because we believe in that, I think we need to take our energies and collectively come together and go to state and reverse what was done, or at least amend it to a more, to a better place, so.
So, all I want to say real quick is, is, it's simple, we're out of our lane here. This is not something that the city of Rolla needs to be taking on. I think it's got some good points, and it's got some good merits, and it's not something we can handle from this side. This needs to be at the state level, this needs to be at the federal level, which, as Josh has recited many times, most of the things are there. So, this needs to be on their plate, not ours.
Any further discussion?
Just point of clarity with the, the motion at hand is to indefinitely table it, I believe. So, a yes vote would table this. Does it take just a majority vote? I just want to clarify that from earlier.
I, I am treating it as a motion to postpone indefinitely, which would require a majority vote.
Okay. Thank you.
So, it requires seven?
No, a majority of those present.
Okay.
It's, it's only ordinances that require a majority of...
The seven.
The body.
The body. And I want to say something, before we vote on this, I realize there's, one way or another, there will be people in this room that are happy or upset. I never thought that I would be a member of council and have to talk about abortion, or talk about my faith to that degree. So, I, I hope that people understand that this has been hard on all of us. It wasn't something that I ever thought I would have to do, and I'm saying that because I know others are, others are thinking this, because it put us in a position. Josh, I have a lot of respect for you, and this is hard to say, but I don't feel like this was the right place to bring this. So, I'm glad we're voting on this tonight to have this, and I would hope that no matter the outcome, that people in our state would try to work on a solution that could be the right way forward.
Yeah, to that point, I don't think anybody on this council is making a non-pro-life statement at all. I think we're just put in a position we shouldn't be in, and asked to, asked to take responsibility that we, we don't have.
Thank you.
So, who made the original motion?
I did. The motion was to table it indefinitely.
Okay, so, would you consider the words to postpone it indefinitely?
Whatever the correct, I, same thing.
Same thing.
Who seconded it?
I seconded it.
And you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. There's no further discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Redley?
So, the motion is to table indefinitely, and the answer is yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Penner?
No.
Grievan?
Yes.
Roman?
No.
Steen?
No.
Turbin?
No.
Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Jackson?
No.
Six eyes, five nays.
Six yeses? Okay. Okay.
I just want to say, nobody won there.
No.
Just so it's very clear.
Comments for the good of the order? There's only one comment that we have listed here. The next council meeting is Monday, February 3rd. Any other council comments, or comments for the good of the order?
I did want to make a comment, and it was, it's a little late, it's after the, after the fact, but I just want to make a mention, everybody's gone by now after the four-hour conversation, but you had made a remark that, well, that was your fault, because you did this at this time, and we didn't set the agenda. This is the first, I knew that there was a 90-day thing a few days ago when I got the packet. So, this issue was just rolling down the road, and it just, that's how it felt.
Yeah, I didn't say it to be...
This can be a campaign issue, so it's fine, it's fine for me.
Yeah, yeah, don't misunderstand, I didn't say it to be critical. I'm just, that's the process. Yeah, that's the process.
I had one comment, this kind of, we went through last meeting without acknowledging this, but we had a really big snowstorm, if no one else noticed, pushed through, with ice and terrible things. One, I was impressed with how little power outages there were, keeping things clear. The road crews were incredible, so I know we've had a contentious one tonight, but I was really impressed with how good everyone, I don't even know who all has to show up to make everything go as well as what it had to. I say road crews, there's probably all sorts of people doing stuff, I don't even know have to do stuff to keep things comfortable, and our heat on. When me and my girls said our prayers that night, we were very thankful to have heat that night, and to be comfortable, so thank you to whoever it is that made that possible through. I was very shocked with how much ice, that there was more power outages going on in our area, so thank you to whoever, whoever did all of that.
So, I, I want to make a statement. As far as the, the dialogue that has happened back and forth with everybody, I have had people contact me from all over the US, all over our state, and all of those conversations weren't, there wasn't, but two really hateful people, and they were pro-choice people, and they were men. And I want to, because I do represent women, and I do care for women, and I feel like I need to stand up for them. I know that there was a comment here at our last meeting about being a forced birther if you're a pro-life person, and that was made from a pro-choice man. So, I take offense to that, and a lot of women across Rolla take offense to that as well. So I just want to let that gentleman know, I know he's in the audience and thinks it's hilarious, but it's, it's hateful. And you have your First Amendment right, and that's great, but no, that's hateful, and that hurts women.
Any other comments?